Good morning, everyone. I call the inaugural meeting of the Guam Legislative Freedom of Information Advisory Council to order. I'd like to thank all of you for accepting the appointments from the various individuals that were asked to make an appointment pursuant to Legislative Rules Resolution 330-32, which created this council to encourage and facilitate compliance with the Freedom of Information Act and the open government laws of Guam. Prior to the creation of this council, the only option for a citizen of Guam who feels that any branch of this government has not been forthright with public documents is to get an attorney and file a lawsuit. Under the new Freedom of Information Council, a member of the public can seek redress from our council. Also, this council will identify which government of Guam agencies are not in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, as well as the legislative branch and the judiciary and the open government law, and we will issue advisories and opinions. The council also will provide public training on the local open government laws and will publish documents and guidelines as needed. We will also review all local Sunshine laws and make suggestions for changes in legislation to make our government more open and transparent to the people of Guam. It's my honor to welcome the members to our council. And before I recognize the members of this council and ask you guys to give a summary of yourselves, although each of you require no introduction, I certainly am pleased and happy with the makeup of this council. It's almost like, I know for most of you, not all of you, a dream come true. Many of you have worked on these issues for the past decades, and I think what we have here is the start of something really good and, I think... Let me first acknowledge our Speaker of the Legislature. Madam Speaker, thank you for being present this morning and for your work toward getting this resolution expedited. And so you're here as an observer, and certainly you've complied and you've made all your appointments. The governor has complied and made all his appointments as well. And at this time, I would like to recognize members of this council, beginning with Senator Tony Ada. Thank you for being here. Senator Tom Adam, Attorney Sofia Santos Diaz. So you've been with the judiciary for a month now, right? And they recruited you to be part of this very important council. Okay. Jane Flores, thank you for being here. Mr. Barry Mead, are you representing the Attorney General of Guam, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
And thank you also, and my appreciation to General Pottis for responding to Resolution Publisher of the Pacific Daily News, Rindrade Luntiago, thank you. Maureen Maritita, the Guam Business News. Jeffrey Marchesal. Senator Robert Klitsky, thank you for accepting the governor's appointment, and I really thank the governor as well. Also, the governor's Director of Communications, Mr. Troy Torres, thank you. Attorney Gary Gumutauta. And let me just go around the room, and you can just give a brief introductions of yourself. But again, please accept my deepest appreciation. I still can't believe that this is the kind of makeup we're going to have, and I think we're going to have a really good time. Mr. Barry Mead, you may begin.
I'm retired.
Do we just go around the room?
Yeah.
I'm Robert Klitsky, covering water.
Jeff Marchesal.
I'm Mike Rambao.
So we have not seen each other in a long time.
Jane Flores of Guam Daily News.
Maureen Maritita, publisher of PDN and a journalist for about 20 years.
You guys are being all humble. I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about your work over the last, I don't want to say decades, to show how many years you've been at this, but really, literally, decades of trying to bring us to what we're attempting to do here through this FOIA council. We might start with you. The PDN has constantly, annually, published an update on the requirements of the Sunshine Law and open government law, and it's been the media's edict to try to get this kind of relationship with all branches of government.
Well, obviously, I mean, both at a very personal kind of professional level.
Is this mic on?
Not good with mics.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I've had a lot of experience in the FOIA forum. Obviously, for us, we're journalists, the more access, the better. You know, and we are staunch supporters and advocates of any laws or policies that give the people, you know, greater access to public documents and access to public meetings. And we take the word "public" very seriously. You know, we don't do what we do just as, I mean, as a business or as a newspaper, we do what we do for our community, because that's who we believe we serve through our journalism.
Thank you. And Jane?
I was looking at the Sunshine Law last night and to review it and...
Can you turn on your microphone, sorry?
As one of the founding members of the Micronesia chapter of the Society of Professional Journalists, which I hope that some of our younger journalists will take up again, because the chapter is kind of dormant right now. But I was one of the people who sat in at the legislature and objected when agencies wanted to have some documents exempt from the Sunshine Law. And as I was reviewing it last night, I was looking at the lists and thinking, "I can't believe I let this one slip." And so, yes, as a longtime journalist, working for Cable News, and then as news director for PNC, and a columnist for PDN, I have always been a staunch believer of freedom of information, and I think that being on this council will allow me to continue that.
Thank you. I think the great thing about how we're starting out is individuals approached various people and said that they wanted to serve. And so it's not like we had a very difficult time trying to find candidates, and I'm sure that was the same for the governor, as well as the Speaker Wampat, and the judiciary and Attorney General. I got a phone call from Maureen also, saying that she wanted to help. Little did she know that her desire to help would mean that she would be a member of this FOIA council, and I thank you for accepting the appointment.
It's my pleasure. I've been on Guam for more than 20 years. I have been, and I'm today a working journalist, even though I carry the title publisher. I remember the FOIA efforts, the open Sunshine Law, and have had direct experience at our news organization with using it. And I agree with my colleagues and peers in the media that open government is important.
And just want to be clear also that we have not amended any current statute with respect to the open government law and any laws that require those kinds of responses based on the Freedom of Information Act. And so this is the responsibility of the Attorney General. We recognize that your enforcement arm of doing this, we're being very clear that our role is advisory in nature. And so like I said in the opening, if a citizen makes a request of any branch of government pursuant to the FOIA, that if they're not being responded to in the manner prescribed by law, their only recourse is to go to court. But in this case, they would appeal to this council to try to determine through an advisory and through our own opinion as a group if that document is public in nature and if it meets the requirements of what's required under those provisions. So, and that's your understanding also, right, Mr. Mason? Attorney Mason?
The Attorney General's office, of course, certainly totally agrees with transparency in government. And, I don't know, most people know me, I've been here a long time. Been at Guam 30 years, so, and all but three years with the government of Guam practicing law. So, and I practiced law before I came here. And so, and we think there could be some changes in the Sunshine Act, some clarifications, and we appreciate the gathering of information. However, I think, from our point of view, you have to remember, this is a legislative committee started by the legislature. And legislature, of course, one of their functions is to gather information, because it has to pass laws and pass budgets. So, in that role, they are, of course, entitled to gather information in order to do their job. Now, the committee has no enforcement, that's the executive branch, and of course, the judicial branch. Here's the case, as you pointed out. So I just think that it should be clear that there's no actual authority of this committee over any executive branch. And anytime the committee is going to make some kind of a decision about a complaint, which of course, you take complaints to all branches of government, the Attorney General's office most likely is going to have to excuse itself from that procedures, because we could end up dealing with that in our role as the Attorney General. So, we would have to do that. But we certainly think the gathering of information is important. And the Sunshine Act and the Open Government Act, of course, have their own enforcement mechanisms, but that's not to say there cannot be improvement. And we agree, there can be improvement in gathering information in order for the legislature to take action to improve those laws, we think is an important function.
Yeah, and I appreciate those comments, because I've recognized from the very beginning that this council has no enforcement arm. But if you take a look at the makeup of this council, and if the council submits an advisory, tell me who's not going to pay attention to that kind of advisory, considering we have members of the media, we have members of the different branches of government. And I recognize that when it would be time to vote on the issuing of these advisories and everything would be done by majority rule, of course, the Attorney General will recuse itself, because you're ultimately the enforcement arm of these laws that if anyone has any concerns with respect to its applicability and whether it's being followed or not. So, thank you for your opening statement. Jeff?
Well, if you're looking for credentials, I think I've established my reputation over the last 20 years in the Marianas as being kind of a bullet china cabinet when it comes to freedom of information. I came from the same tradition that Jane Flores came from. We both worked for Lee Holmes, and this was, for me at least, back in the early to mid-'90s. And Lee Holmes used to recruit people from the states who, you know, wanted to get into journalism, especially electronic journalism. And back in Saipan, I literally had rocks thrown at me, and I was thrown in jail as a result of trying to get access. Now, I sometimes overstepped my bounds, but when it comes to freedom of information, as long as it's complying with the law, it's something that I'm willing to fight for, and I've proven it. But anyway, I really appreciate the appointment from the Director of the Legislature, and I look forward to working with the committee. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Just as the Attorney General's representative, Mr. Mason, pointed out that legislature's responsibility is to gather all the information, and it's why we're here, we want to recognize the support of Governor Cabo in appointing two individuals, Senator Bob Klitsky and Mr. Troy Torres. And so earlier, Bob, you mentioned this is something that you're looking forward to, and I certainly feel the same way that you do.
I am. As I understand this committee, it's an adjunct of the Rules Committee, and I echo many of the things that Pat Mason said with respect to the jurisdiction and function of this committee. The thing that I find most intriguing is that when it comes to transparency, which I would distinguish from freedom of information, open government, and Sunshine, but not right now. The legislature has the upper hand, because with respect to the other parts of the government, if we're going to change the law, it requires action here, it requires action from the government, as you were, from the governor. And then you have several thousand people that are part of the executive branch, and it's oftentimes very difficult, even in the face of the change in the law, to change attitudes, approaches, et cetera. But with respect to this branch, it's very small, it's very cohesive, and you have all the eight people here have the complete ability to provide all the transparency we could ever ask for, just by changing your standing rules with a rules resolution. Excuse me, rules resolution. I've been very concerned about transparency in this branch for most of my adult life. You younger folks wouldn't remember the seventh Guam Legislature, but I do. So for those reasons, I'm really looking forward to serving with this commission. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Senator Klitsky. Director Torres?
Thanks, Senator. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and this conversation and dialogue on especially transparency. I think it was February 6, 2011, my boss, Chief of Staff Rank Ariola, by order of the governor, sent out a directive to all GovGuam employees that said a few things. It said, first, if there are any gag orders that you're accustomed to in your agency, they're hereby revoked. Second, if you want to speak with the media on any issue, you have the authority to do so, as long as you speak from your personal capacity, and you do so in a way that doesn't obstruct government functions. If the media asks you, or if any member of the public asks you for information that you know to be public information, you are to release it on demand. If you are an authority who is able and capable of releasing public information, then do so. If you're not an authority, then check with your supervisor. But if you know it to be public information, then release it, and you don't have to wait for the four days to release a public document according to the FOIA law. That, among other things, was a directive that came on February 6, 2011, and it's three years later. And as Senator Klitsky said, you know, things take a while in an organization of 11,000 people, but that message is pervading through the government of Guam. And there are some kinks here and there, but we're working through those. But by and large, from the top, the message is transparency.
Yeah, thank you. I think the governor's demonstrated that by appointing two of you to be part of this council. Yeah, thank you. We also want to recognize the separate but co-equal branch of government, the judiciary, and I thank Chief Justice Torres for making the appointment as well. Attorney Diaz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And on behalf of the judiciary, I think that this is an important council to, and the work is important for the purposes of ensuring that there is information, public information for community members out there. And I think one of the things that I've noticed, and I've only been a government of Guam employee prior to my appointment with the judiciary, I was at the Civil Service Commission for three and a half years. But I would say that one of the things that might be helpful is, and I think that this is something that is actively being worked on across the government of Guam, is that more information getting posted on websites would kind of free up all of these FOIA, I mean, FOIA requests, really, it's about being able to just access information readily. And so I think the more active government agencies are in just posting general information, there's all sorts of regular questions that kind of Joe on the street has that, you know, wouldn't necessarily require a FOIA request if we just kind of posted it on our general websites. And I think that that's something that people are actively, government agencies are actively trying to achieve now. But maybe part of the function of this council could be to assist in trying to get those kind of efforts speeded up a little bit. But I appreciate the appointment, and I'm looking forward to working with the council. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that's one of the items that we're tasked to do, is to make sure that compliance with the open government law throughout all three branches of government, websites and things like that, are updated within the next two months. And that's the timeline that we've set for ourselves. Thank you for your opening statement also. Attorney Gumutauta?
When I worked with the Attorney General's office and also with the school board...
Can you speak into the mic?
Because the people won't be able to hear unless I'm speaking in the mic. When I worked with the Attorney General's office and also with the school board as council, we strove to try to respond to any kind of Sunshine Act request as rapidly as possible. We didn't wait until the deadline to try to meet it. We tried, as soon as we got the request, we started looking for the documents to try to get them out. And several times, we would even waive the charge for the photocopy, just to make sure that people got what they needed as fast as possible. And if we thought that there was something else that they needed that was part of the package that wasn't specifically asked or requested, then we'd try to inquire to see whether or not that might be something they would like to have as well. So the whole point is to make sure that in service to the people, that we give them what they need. We give them the information so they know that the people that are working for the people are in fact working for the people, and that they know what's going on with the money and with the assets and resources that they're given. Because so often, you know, the public complains, you know, "What are we getting for what we're paying?" So I think that FOIA is a very important aspect of that. And so I look forward to supporting this council's work.
Thank you. And in the adoption of the resolution, we've also, in our interest to provide balance here at the legislature, we have represented from the minority, our minority leader, Senator Tony Ada, and also a member of the majority and vice chair of the Committee on Rules and other committees. I have oversight over Senator Tom Adam. Thank you also for your participation. You want to give an opening statement?
Yeah, I just, well, everybody was kind of giving their introduction to themselves, I guess. I just, you know, in listening to Attorney Generals, to Attorney Pat Mason, you indicated that when it comes time to voting on an issue for the council, that you would have to recuse yourself because of the possibility that subsequently the Attorney General's office may be the one that would have to initiate action. And I guess in your having said that, it kind of causes me some concern that, you know, that the Attorney General's office will be sitting at this table and contributing to the discussions, which may influence my thinking on certain things, but then when it comes time to vote, you have to recuse yourself. So I just hope that that doesn't, you know, down the road conflict, as opposed to maybe just stepping away from the table and...
Senator, I totally agree with you. I will not participate in any discussion regarding any complaints that come to you in which you're going to make an opinion, form an opinion, and publish that opinion. I cannot. I've gone through the agenda, and it looks to me like the one area that the Attorney General may be able to participate is conducting training seminars and education programs.
Even Item D also. Item D, a two-month deadline for review of compliance. That's a compliance issue.
There again, we're looking at things that we work with these agencies. They often come to us and say, "What do we do?" And so I may have to defend an agency, I may have to work with an agency to work with the people that are making the request. And so I think if you're talking about compliance enforcing the law, I'd have to do that as an Assistant Attorney General. If you're talking about, I think any kind of compliance, if you're talking about gathering information from the agencies, I think I'd have to recuse myself and let the agencies decide what they're going to do. I could be on the other side of one of your requests, I'll be quite frank, you know, because this is an executive branch. So I perfectly agree with Senator Ada that there are many areas in which the Attorney General should not participate, but I feel that training seminars and education is one area where we could.
Thank you, and I appreciate that clarification. And I just want to say that I accepted the appointment to this council simply because I think that at some point down the road, as arising out of this council's discussion, there may be the need for some kind of legislative intervention. And so I would like to be, you know, staying abreast of what the council is doing, so that when that time comes, then we're ready to, then certainly, I think, I would be able to contribute more directly and not, you know, be the guy that's trying to catch that train as it's already going down the train track. So that's, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Let me recognize Rindrade for a follow-up comment.
Pat, I think though, you know, as it deals with individual complaints, I can totally understand you recusing yourself, but I think your value in regards to kind of general issues, or as we talk about legislative reviews, or, you know, deadline compliance, things like that, I think you have very valuable, you have very valuable input for that. And I think really for this council, what Senator Klitsky had said, in regards to our role, kind of reviewing legislation, clarifying, you know, legislation, as you mentioned, I mean, I really, that's what I'm very excited about, you know, more than anything else. I think when the laws were passed, the Sunshine Act, I mean, that was a great step forward. But, you know, there's been a lot of time since then, and a lot of different experiences, and we're in a digital age. And so I think definitely the legislation needs to be reviewed and updated and moved forward. So, I mean, you being here for that perspective, I think is very valuable.
Yes, we would be more than happy, as we are generally with the legislature, to participate in proposed bills, and then after bills are drafted, looking at those bills. We're happy to do that.
Sir Ada? You okay? Thank you also for being here and accepting the appointment. Jeff? And then I want to recognize Barry after you.
Okay, I just wanted to add something real quick to what Rindrade was saying. Recusal also applies to anybody that's on this board, whose agency they represent, or legislature, or senatorial office, is being investigated, or if there's a complaint against one of your offices. So I just wanted to make that clear. Anybody that has anything to do with a complaint would probably also have to recuse themselves or even answer to the council.
Jane?
I echo Rindrade's concern and her, you know, views about the Attorney General's office, because I like the fact that you're here, Pat, because if we need a legal opinion on whether an agency is actually following the law, I think that that would be something that...
The individual complaints or things like that, that's where you have to recuse yourself, right?
Right.
Yeah. I'm afraid as to whether an agency's following the law, we would have to get a request from or become involved with that agency, and we probably would not be able to do it through this committee. That would be one of the areas where we would not participate. But as far as drafting laws, we're more than happy to participate.
But if this council adopted an advisory that suggested that an agency or a branch of government did not follow a FOIA complaint, and that's forwarded to the Attorney General, certainly you would act on that.
Well, we, anything that comes to us as a request from, this is a legislative committee from the committee, that's one of our duties, is to review those requests. And so we would be reviewing it from our legal point of view, separate and apart from the committee, totally.
And I think that would be helpful to provide the citizen that kind of recourse, because the only available recourse they have right now is to go to court.
Yeah. You know, any formal request to the Attorney General himself on something of that nature, we would review, because this is a legislative committee.
Mr. Mead, Barry? Barry was also another individual that stepped forward and said, "Hey, I like the idea of the creation of this council, and I want to help." Thank you, Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the first thing is that when this council was being formulated and I contacted you, in a previous board that I sat on, I had to resort to actually advising the folks that I would be filing a FOIA to get information to help me make decisions that were made by that board. And I thought that was pretty sad. And for everyone's advice, since I have left that board, I have made three FOIA requests to that department. I've received responses, and the responses are in such a way that also other people, when they found I was appointed to this council, came to me and they brought concerns to me. And they were the same concerns. And they primarily deal with, under the subcommittee mandates, B and C. And they primarily deal with, under the subcommittee mandates of B and C, training seminars, education programs for the agencies and also for the general public. And then also publication of educational materials such as flyers that are sitting on the front counter of the agency that gives people advice as to how to file or how to make a FOIA request or what can be contained or is there a format or what's the procedures? Because unlike everyone at this table that sits down and can, can read the law and comprehend it and, and deal with it, general public usually has a hard time understanding or comprehending the way the law is written or going through it or finding it even. So, that was another area that I thought was really good, and I thought maybe one of the mandates here would, would be also suggestions to the legislature as a whole as to possible revision to the Open Government Act or the Sunshine Act that would also make it easier for folks to get the information. It's sad to think that we have to go to the extent of making a FOIA request to get information as a board member you couldn't get. And it really disturbed me, not to the point to where I would be prejudiced or do anything of that nature, but at the same time, if that happened to me as a board member, what happens to the general public sometimes when they make these requests? And then just to be the non-controversial person I am, when I sit and I watch somebody bring in 13 boxes of paper without a, a file as to what's in the boxes and where, to satisfy a request, that's ridiculous. That's not getting anything done. That's not working together. That's not transparency. It's not any of the things that people talk about we want from our government and being able to get along. So, that's why I welcome the, the opportunity. Being retired, I have plenty of time. So, I want to thank the chairman for the, the opportunity to participate. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And your opening statement is a great segue to the next discussion, and that's the rules of procedure. There are 13 members, and so, matter of principle, everything will be carried by majority vote. As the Attorney General mentioned and Senator Klitsky and others have mentioned, we really have no enforcement authority with what, with respect to what we're going to do. But again, I guess because of the makeup of the membership and how we're proceeding, I think this counsel could be very influential to meet those objectives of Resolution 330-32. I'm going to entertain a discussion on, on whether or not we should use Robert's Rules or Mason's Manual as a basis to which guides us in these, Robert Klitsky's Rules. I'm sorry, I stand corrected. So, I mean, this is...
Brother Pat, me, that's a difference.
Pat Mason. Very good. So, there, we have to decide, do we go with Attorney Mason's Rules? No, these are actual names, obviously, Mason's Manual of Legislative Proceedings or, or Robert's Rules of Order. This is really, although this is a creation of the legislature, this is not really like a standing committee of the legislature, right? And unlike an ethics committee of the legislature where it's purely 100% driven by the legislature, this is not. We have representatives from all branches of government. So, I'm going to take the liberty to suggest that we operate with rules that most of you are most familiar with, and that's Robert's Rules. Yeah, is there a motion that we do that? It's been moved and pursuant to Robert's Rules, we need a second?
Second.
Second has been moved and second, and then there any objections? No objections, so ordered. We've also, along with Robert's Rules of Order, we're also obviously going to comply with the laws of Guam. And with respect to the open government law, the notices this meeting were, were noticed with respect to those requirements, and so, you have an agenda before you. And now that we've established our rules of procedure, I've called this meeting to order. We've introduced the members. I've recapped what this counsel is all about, and I would now like to go to Item Three to entertain an election of a vice chair. Are there any suggestions? Jeff?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Jane Flores.
Okay. Do you accept?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, are there any other nominations for a vice chair? If not, if there's, are you going to make a...
Just thinking.
Just thinking?
Uh-oh.
No, I don't.
Sure, I will defer to Mr. Mason if he would like to...
Well, just because we're using Senator Klitsky's rules, just teasing, what's been moved and is there a second to the nomination?
Doesn't require a second.
The nomination doesn't, okay.
Well, I need the nomination to be closed.
Yeah, that then, there's a motion that the nominations be closed. There's any objections? No objections, so ordered and so by acclamation, congratulations, Jane, and thank you very much for your...
Just another thing.
And before we go to Item Four, I'm going to recognize Bernadette Meno, who was also in a previous life, was a member of the Mariana Society Professional Journalists and Micronesia Chapter. And so, Senator Klitsky, you want to recap what award Bernadette got at the time? You mentioned it to me.
Can she, I can answer chat with Bernadette a little earlier and refresh my recollection, but in 1991, Bernadette was given the Sunshine Award of the Year for being the person who enforced various Sunshine Act requirements when government agencies attempted to close their meetings and exclude people from those meetings. Bernadette took, as I recall, a rather aggressive approach to that, prevailed and was awarded the Sunshine Award for 1991.
Okay. And so, having said that, and, and Mr. Mead suggested that, you know, your ordinary citizen is kind of inundated with the, the FOIA requirements, can you give us an overview of how the Guam Legislature's website was updated and amended to provide for the creation of the Freedom of Information Act Council? Can you get a mic because... Wait, we got to get you on a mic so that... Just so that the listening audience can, yeah.
I'll just sit next to my old boss. Okay. We, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We basically used the legislative website as our base, you know, because we're not expending any money. And on the homepage, on the right-hand side, there is a, you know, click here for more information, FOIA button on the bottom right-hand side. And when they click on that, it goes to our FOIA website. This is all, you know, subject to change, whatever the council wants, if they want to establish a separate, independent website. So, right now, we have, they can click for a copy of the Rules Resolution, which established the council. This is for members of the public. It's a copy of the resolution. We have the announcement of the meeting dates. We've placed copies of the agenda and the public notices on the website. We have copies of the actual complaints that have been filed with the council already in PDF form that, as soon as we're able to transmit them into PDF, we upload them. There's also an area where people can contact the council if they want to foil, to file a complaint. We have copies of all the news releases about the council, copies of all correspondence, especially, you know, the ones to the different branches of government notifying them of their ability to appoint members. We have the current members, except for, I apologize, Mr. Kumal Tal, the guys that normally update the website. We're here this morning putting the, the presentation up here. So, after this is over, your name will be up there. We have contact information, also the applicable laws for Guam, and then different resources the public can go to. If you notice, the Virginia FOIA Advisory Council, their website is there, and our council here is patterned pretty much after the way Virginia has their Freedom of Information Advisory Council. So, as the different committees, subcommittees are established, whatever it is that, whether it's the education or the training or, you know, specific matters, then we will be, you know, whatever you wish, we'll be posting on the website and also minutes from the meeting and any notices.
Okay, thank you. And can you also quickly walk the committee members, the council members and the public through how a citizen can file a Freedom of Information Act request through that website?
Oh, okay. The, the email address for the FOIA council is up there. Are you talking about filing a FOIA complaint with us or...
Just to give them the guidance, because from my understanding, unless you cite the open government law, the, the branch of government or the agencies won't really have to comply with that or treat that as a FOIA request.
Right, I think...
The media also has to cite the statute.
Right. I think one of the next steps that we would want to do is put some sample FOIA letters, yeah, templates. So, I'll put those together, forward them to the council members for approval, and once we put the sample templates that people can follow, and then we'll publish the templates online so that, you know, they can follow that a little bit easier.
I was, I'm sorry, I was going to say, maybe we should standardize the FOIA request and have the language so that they can have a, a fillable PDF.
Right, okay.
And maybe like a step-by-step on what happens after you file.
Okay. Yeah, because I think a lot of people don't realize that they can request the documents electronically, which saves on, you know, production and it, it won't cost citizens any money to, you know, to ask for the copies to be electronically because then the fees are waived. So, yeah, like Rendrade was saying, the step-by-step process and then the templates, including a printable PDF that they can just insert their information. So, I'll put all of that together and then forward it to the committee for, the council for approval, and once it's approved, we'll upload it. And then we'll notify the public at that point that these documents are accessible for them to make the, the process easier for them.
Maureen?
Yes, I'd just like to say, and I'm sure we'll get to that at some point, that I think it would be valuable to have some FAQs, why we have this legislation, what you can do under it, what you can't, just in very simple language so that people have an understanding of why there is a process as well as what the process is.
Okay, but the process that we're trying to establish and will eventually get the, the council's approval is the step-by-step process by which a citizen will inform this council that they've made a FOIA request and that the, the time elapsed and that that branch of government has not complied.
So, the process also for a member of the public to file a complaint with the council?
Yeah, and so, then that complaint will be forwarded to this council, and there's the email address, and then we will have to determine our process by which that complaint is addressed through this council.
And the emphasis should be on that they can file the request themselves first and that it should not come here unless they felt that it's been denied or there was a violation.
Yeah. And, and, and in, in expanding on Mr. Mason's concern, it might be that if a citizen makes some kind of request for what they believe is a public document, that may not be a public document under the open government law. And that may be the case also for members of the media. And so, so I, I hope that we come across as basically a third-party objective to say, "We reviewed your complaint and we determined that pursuant to the open government law, the document to which you're requesting is not part of, it's not a document that could be FOIA." So, you know, that's, that's what we envisioned pursuant to this resolution. Thank you, Bernadette. On Item Four, the appointment of subcommittees related to mandates, the resolution provides for four different areas. First area being the furnishing upon request advisory opinions or guidelines based on public complaints. This committee, I imagine, would be the one to receive the complaint and make initial advisory opinion or finding to the full council, and then the council will act on, on those, vote in majority for it or, or maybe decide otherwise. But then the next, Item B, conducting training seminars and educational programs, this would be helpful for all branches of government to understand what their requirements are pursuant to law. C is publication of educational materials. And D, the two-month deadline for review of compliance with Five GCA, Chapter 10, Article Three, Section 10, 305. This basically is the websites of all the different branches of governments and all the different departments and agencies. I will entertain any interest from any of you to chair any of these subcommittees. And so, unlike how we elected our vice chair where it was just, Jane, I want to ask if there's any, any interest from any of you to chair any of these subcommittees. Mr. Mason, you said that you might think the AG would be more appropriate for Item Since you're going to recuse yourself in every other part of the council, we might as well give you something you're willing to do.
Yeah, but, but when you say me, you say the Office of the Attorney General, which could involve other lawyers that I work with, and that's who I think you have to understand. So, we could work on that, yes.
Okay, so, I'm hearing no objections, right? That then AG take the lead in Item B? Okay.
I think Bob should take it, Senator Klitsky.
A, I vote, I second, second that, yes.
I had sort of envisioned myself...
Is your mic gone, Senator? Sorry.
I, I sort of had in mind reverting back to the year 2003, 2004, Mr. Chairman, when you and I were backbenchers. That's kind of the role I saw for myself.
No.
Perhaps a backbench sharpshooter at that.
No. Rendrade and I don't think so.
We don't.
You know, the rudder is very important in any organization.
Very true. We're looking, we're looking forward to your acting as a rudder, potential.
Yeah, and you're been asked to take Item A?
Pass. Thank you very much, pass.
Would you work on that, committee? Not chair, but work on it?
I'll give you a definite maybe on that one.
Since Jeff nominated me to be vice chair, I nominate him for that committee.
Hold on, for A?
Yes.
I, I think we should have a lawyer in that position, don't you? I'm not a lawyer.
He said no.
You're a lawyer, how about you?
I'm standing in his shadow.
I just, my, my strong opinion as a non-lawyer is that we should have someone who is an attorney in that.
I'll serve on the committee if you'll chair it.
Okay, sure, that's fine, that's fair enough.
Oh, that's on A?
So, you have...
Well, he said a definite maybe even to participate, so...
Part of my 12-step program is to not tilt windows anymore.
So, we'll, we'll drag him kicking and screaming. Don't overcommit, right, Bob? Just overdeliver.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you, gentlemen. Rendrade's volunteered for C, publication of educational materials. Thank you.
I have an interest in working on that.
Yeah. And Item D? Bernadette would help, the staff would help, Mr. Ariola's here as well as the AG. Attorney Diaz, can I ask the judiciary, because you kind of alluded to this in your opening statement, that if the websites were all in compliance with the open government law, we probably won't see anyone having to go and make these requests formally?
This is, Mr. Chairman, this is for appointment to, to chair the subcommittee or to work...
Yeah, to chair. And you certainly will have all 13 of us, for every committee, all 13 of us available to the extent they're available to be available, right?
Sure.
So, Sophia, so Attorney Diaz, D?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. On item five, we did receive a complaint filed by Dr. Ron McNich regarding the Senate Faculty Committee. In the spirit of open government and transparency, I want to quickly recognize Dr. McNich to submit your complaint to the FOIA council. Yeah, yeah. I mean, not everybody would have to formally appear before the council, but Mr. McNich asked that he be given some time.
Thank you, Senator Spieso. My name is Ron McNich, and I filed a complaint with your commission last week. And honorable council members, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to my complaint. I think it's very fitting that this particular council is meeting during Law Week. And it's, you know, the open government law and the Sunshine laws are certainly a very important part of our system. I believe your council's important, and I would much prefer these kinds of issues be heard in a council such as this rather than in a court of law because the public can see and listen and participate in the process. Whereas in courts, they really don't get the full view of the issues. I need to point out that in my complaint, Mr. Mason had earlier advised or participated. I have no objection to him giving his view on this. I have no, you know, there's, I don't believe there's, for me, there's no conflict. He's just offering opinions. And I have no objection to him doing so if he, if he wishes to. In 2000, 2001, in the University of Guam versus Tarantino case, the University of Guam claimed that the Attorney General's office had no right to enforce the laws of Guam at the University of Guam. And so I think that it's, it's, it's interesting to note that. Also, I have no issue with anyone on this council. I know, I know everyone on this council. I have no conflicts. For some people, I might wear a halo. Others, I might, they might have a voodoo doll for me. I don't care. This is a, an open government issue and it's a pretty basic open government question. My question, my open government question is actually very simple. The Board of Regents basically is subject to the open government law. The Board of Regents of the University of Guam is subject to the open government law. The University of Guam Faculty Senate was created or chartered by the Board of Regents. And it's a policy advisory. In the Faculty Senate bylaws, it says what the purpose of the University of Guam Faculty Senate is. It's a policy committee. It's an advisory committee. Normally subordinate committees of a board are subject to the open government law. And so my question is, does the University of Guam Faculty Senate have to follow the open government law? And the reason I'm asking this is starting in 2013 or so, there was a new practice where the University of Guam Faculty Senate would close their meetings and essentially, basically start discussing the political work of individual faculty members without the faculty members being present. I am very opposed to this, and I think that this practice needs to be checked. I believe that in general, I'm an affected faculty member in this issue. I believe that my academic rights were violated using this procedure in September of 2013. I think that the Faculty Senate is supposed to uphold academic freedom and protect academic freedom at the University of Guam. It is a very basic practice to have academic freedom due process. If someone questions my work, I have a right to reply. Or if someone questions my work, I have the right to reply to that. And that was never offered to me. As an academy, the University of Guam is actually held to a higher normative standard that's even above the law. And that's the standard of the academy, which protects academic freedom. This is expressed in WASC Standard 1.3. It's also expressed in WASC Standard 1.7 in the transparency and due process provisions. For the last seven months, I've tried very hard to have this resolved within the University of Guam. I went through every possible measure I can think of to have this addressed internally without it being made public. In general, from my understanding, the university administration views this as a faculty matter. I think that it's a, a policy matter. I believe that it's covered by the Association of University Professors Standards for Academic Freedom, also the WASC or Accreditation Standards for Academic Freedom. The point here is very, very specific. I work in a tough academic field. It is really hard to do the academic work that I do. I don't study rocks. I don't study dusty history. I study government. And studying government in this environment is studying in a very turbulent environment. It's very hard. Without academic freedom, I couldn't do my job. I couldn't instruct students. Protecting academic freedom is extremely important. It is, and that's why open government is so important within the Faculty Senate at the University of Guam. I would have preferred the university to simply address this internally. And I just want to make that point clear. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Ron. As with all complaints submitted to the council, it would, I imagine, automatically go to item A for the, for now Mr. Marshesaw's committee to, to develop some kind of advisory opinion or guideline to present to the council. Is there, Mr. Klitschko?
If this committee has jurisdiction to do what Professor McNich has asked, the fundamental question is, is there jurisdiction? And there is, if the, if the answer to that question is no, then there isn't anything for the committee to do. So every tribunal has jurisdiction to determine its own jurisdiction. Before we get wound up, wound up too far on our own axle here, I think we should make a determination as to whether or not this council, such as it is, being a part of the rules, being an adjunct to the Rules Committee of Legislature, has jurisdiction to proceed on what's been brought before us.
Well, wouldn't that be one of the recommendations that Jeff's committee would make from the beginning? That his, his belief is that this council does not have jurisdiction in this particular case, and then he would not proceed to, maybe that might be the advisory?
Well, I, I suppose-
Are we prepared to determine jurisdiction today?
I suppose, I suppose that is something that can be done. I would suggest, though, that if we were talking about a court, and we're not, but one of, one of the important things that courts pay attention to is conservation of judicial resources. So just as courts attempt to conserve their resources, I think we should do the same thing. And I don't think we should move forward until we determine that we have jurisdiction to enter this, entertain this complaint. And that's something that is sinclairon to any kind of quasi-judicial procedure.
Okay. Madam Vice Chair?
I have a question for Dr. McNich. In your complaint, you said, please note that the current rules state that appointees may not be present at the time they are voted on. Are you contending that the Faculty Senate, when they voted on your, your academic work, did they do this in executive session? Because executive session is one of the, the areas that is covered in the Sunshine law. You are not privy to when people vote on something with an employee. There, that's not something that's covered under the open government law.
Absolutely. But in the case of the open government law, it's very specific. The aggrieved employee or the infected employee has the right to participate in the process if they're going to be negatively affected by it.
Impacted.
So I had a right to be there in the room and reply to these issues, which were really pretty innocuous. I want there to be a single Board of Regents, and now there's two Boards of Regents or trustees, things like that, that should have been discussed in the open anyway. So I believe that you're, you're, you're correct. They can go into executive session if it involves individuals, but the individual has a due process right. And I believe that, that my due process was violated. But there is another point related to Senator Klitschko's point. Even if this, this tribunal doesn't have jurisdiction over this issue, the public now knows about this issue. And it's a very important issue. And I appreciate the council for providing a forum for it. Because really, this is not just a open government issue. It's an accreditation issue. And, and I believe it's an important one. And it's one that was never really addressed internally at the university.
Well, my, my suggestion would be, because it appears that there's a current rule that says appointees may not be present. So maybe there should be a suggestion or to change the law so that an appointee does, is allowed due process under this process.
I think as an advisory committee, that would be a very apt suggestion for this council to advise the Faculty Senate on, that they should give people the right to due process. They shouldn't talk behind their back. Because really, this is a kind of, it's simply not right for people to talk about others behind their back and decide against them when they're not given a chance to defend themselves. We don't have star chambers in, in this century. We don't allow people to be tried without being able to respond. And I think that making that suggestion to the Faculty Senate might be a very good, good option for this committee.
Senator Klitschko, I just wanted to kind of explore that. So when you're, when you're discussing jurisdiction, do you mean, do we have jurisdiction over this issue where whether the council can make a recommendation based on the review? Or whether or not we should be even considering whether the Faculty Senate, you know, is affected by open government laws? I just need clarification.
Both. Whether, first of all, whether we should be considering whether this council has jurisdiction to probe especially matters like WASC accreditation, academic freedom and things like that. That goes, that goes beyond the four corners of the resolution that created this council. But perhaps more basic than that, Dr. McNich's papers talk about a commission, or excuse me, a senate that was chartered by the Regents. Now, I looked through these papers, and maybe I didn't look thoroughly enough, but I didn't see any, any writing there that says that the Faculty Senate is chartered by the Regents. So let me give you an example that's not on point, but easily understood. Let's say that there's a University of Guam Glee Club. And let's say that the whoever's in charge of vocal music out there decides that we're going to have a University of Guam Glee Club. You really need your imagination for this one now. Let's say that I'm in the Glee Club and that I would like to be the soloist. And as it turns out, the Glee Club closets itself and in order to spare my feelings, don't allow me in the room. And they come back and they're saying, no, Bob, you're not going to be the soloist for the Glee Club. Do we, is that an open government violation? Because if the Glee Club is not chartered by an entity that has the ability, that actually comes within the ambit of the, of the act itself, then it kind of doesn't matter. Now, I'm not saying that the things that Dr. McNich brings before us this morning don't matter to him. Maybe they don't matter to a lot of people. But I think that councils, government agencies, councils, committees, whatever in general, make a mistake when they start out trying to be all things to all people. If, if we don't have jurisdiction, we should determine that we don't have jurisdiction and move on.
I have something to add to that, if it's, if it's okay.
Well, I have a Barry and then Maureen and then you.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Having experience in this area specifically, in that I helped create the Faculty Senate at the Guam Community College, I think what, in, in, in Dr. McNich's presentation after his introduction, if you will, his, his points, he asked three basic questions. And the first question to me, I think, answers Senator Klitschko's request is, does the Guam open government law apply to the University of Guam Faculty Senate? Further down under his applied policy concepts, he cites that the open government law of Guam covers any board commission committee or other body which offers public service and advisory commission, committee or advisory body, public agency. If in fact, the University of Guam Faculty Senate was chartered by the UOG Board of Regents, the Faculty Senate at the Guam Community College is actually a, a part of the union contract agreement. But in this case, it looks as though the University of Guam Board of Regents hasn't, has, has approved that charter. In the same manner in which they would approve the exclusive recognition of the UOG Faculty Union. It says they were empowered to initiate review of a wide range of academic policy matters. If that in fact is true, then I would go back and answer the question, does the open government law apply to the University of Guam Faculty Senate as being a yes? But having said that, there is the other issue that, that Dr. McNich brings up that's very important is that I think we all understand that with the accreditation process for the University of Guam and the Guam Community College through WASC, they are very specific in being concerned about political interference with the college and with the university, to the point of where in the past, the college and university were looked at losing their accreditation because of that interference. The College of the Northern Marianas Island is still under probation because of this issue that their vision statement was actually legislative law. So there is that concern, and I, and I agree with that. But also, in fact, that the University of Guam, if I am not mistaken, is bound by the open government law and Sunshine law. Having sat on the Board of Trustees at the Guam Community College, we held executive session. The executive sessions were very mandated as to what you could and couldn't do. And one of the things you can't do in executive session is vote. Votes must be public. And that is mandated in, on the open government law, Section 8111. C specifically mentions the fact that the person being discussed has a right to be present. So to me, on question A, does the open government law apply to the University of Guam Faculty Senate? My answer to that would be yes. And if it's yes, then to me, that gives this body the ability to sit and discuss this issue and come up with, it would have to be a recommendation, as we talked before, because we have no jurisdiction to make law or an outcome. But just in that one section alone, and that would then answer B, can the Faculty Senate meet in secret or executive session without violating? The answer to that would be no. And, and from the policies, it, it looks as though I would have to say that we do have the ability to discuss this and, and to, what our mandate is, is, is make recommendations as to how to satisfy that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mason? Yeah, Attorney? Yeah.
I should, there's something I should not be involved in.
Okay. It's televised, so you might, you didn't hear me. Okay. Yeah, Jeff, and then, of course.
All right. I agree with Barry on that point. I, I don't know that we can address everything that's listed on Professor McNich's shopping list. I think he's gone fishing and he's trying to figure out what it is we can get involved with. But I agree that we can at least get involved with his primary concern, which is as an academic institution, the policy function side of the university should not operate in secret. This is an accreditation standard. And he's just asking if Faculty Senate, as an appointment of the Regents, is subject to the law. So I don't have a problem with that at all. And of course, if I'm the chairman of this, the committee for furnishing, let's see, for guidelines based on public complaints, then I think we should at least look at it. The law states, the open government law, that no such meeting may be closed except on written recommendation of the attorney and an affirmative vote of the majority of the members of the board, of the public agency to go into executive session. Also, this board seems to be concerned with potential disturbances, not actual disturbances. There was an amendment that Dr. McNich presented to us, and I'm not sure if this amendment has been approved or it's merely been presented. You can clarify?
Yes, I'll clarify. They pulled the amendment for now. And so I should have mentioned that earlier, that they pulled back on the amendment to close a lot more meetings. And so for now, it's under discussion.
Okay. And, and basically what that amendment is saying is that the senate, however, at its discretion, may convene all or any portion of a meeting in executive session as necessary and proper to ensure the integrity of decisions and the decision-making process. It's not limited merely to personnel matters. Or when the presiding officer deems that the senate may be subject to attempts at intimidation, duress, or disruption by non-members present or likely to enter the meeting hall. So if somebody thinks somebody's a threat, or the chairman of that body thinks somebody is a threat or feels threatened or, or personally perturbed by that person, then they can say automatically executive session. And I think that's something that we should look into.
Gary, Attorney Gomitato, then Senator Klitschko, and then Rendrade.
I think the whole issue about whether or not we have jurisdiction doesn't matter because we're just an advisory group to begin with. And if the whole point of having this advisory group is to give people an avenue other than- And if the whole point of having this advisory group is to give people an avenue other than going to court, then obviously, we need to address each and every complaint that comes forward to us. It's not a matter of jurisdiction or not, because we don't have any judicial resources to worry about. You know, it's simply a matter of, we're here to give the public an opportunity to vent and to be able to get an address of their question. And the question that he's asking is whether or not that this body is within the ambit of the open government law, you know? So that's exactly what we're here to determine. So I think that we need to go forward with it, take a look at it, and do it as a group.
You know, I think we should also recognize that for some members of the public, we're going to be an advisory body of last resort. I think Mr. Dr. McNinch has the benefit of a very active brain and familiarity with the material that he brought to us. I think there may also be other people out there that will have a concern that won't have that familiarity, and I think both his issue and any future issues are worthy of our opinion. And I do recognize that it's only an opinion, that's what we were created, to give our professional opinions.
Well, this is an excellent test case to guide us as a matter of procedure. And so what I'm hearing is, every complaint that's submitted to the FOIA council probably should automatically go to Jeff. I know there's an objection, and we would be able to entertain that by way of a motion, but is there at least enough support to put that forward in terms of a motion and a matter of procedure? Because we're getting...
I thought that I was going to get a chance to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Well, yeah, you are. Yeah, you are.
Before you entertain, sous sponti entertain a motion.
No, no, I'm going to recognize you also.
Before you sous sponti entertain the motion?
No, no, I'm not entertaining a motion, I'm seeing if there's consensus for a motion.
That's sous sponti entertaining a motion, Mr. Chairman. But could I be heard?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, there has been references to, the only thing a person could do would be to go to a lawyer in the face of frustration with either of these two acts. So I think Gary would agree with me that, first of all, anything that tends to generate fees for lawyers can't be all bad. But second...
Ah, the truth is finally out.
But second, that statement is a truism that kind of misses the mark. There are all kinds of things you can do. If you're at the, an agency that has a governing board, you can petition the governing board. If you're an agency that does not have a governing board, if an executive agency, for instance, and you don't get to where you don't get what you think you should get, then you can go to the governor's office. I've done that myself, and I'd have to say that I got what I wanted, and I didn't have to go to a lawyer, thank God. So that's a little bit, it's a little bit of an overstatement of a case, that if you are shut out from a meeting, or you don't get what you asked for in a Freedom of Information Act request, the only thing you can do is break your piggy bank and go to a lawyer. There are other avenues available. But that's just the side point. More importantly, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you 100% when you said that this state, this case is very important, as it tends to, it will tend to determine how we proceed on all these complaints in the future. Therefore, I think we need to approach this with an abundance of caution, because I don't think we want to start out on the footing that we're going to base our decisions, our referrals, or our non-decisions, on oral history and pleadings. Now, what we have here, if it's anything, you know, again, analogizing to a court of law, this is a pleading. Pleadings aren't evidence. So if there is a charter of the Faculty Senate from the Board of Regents, that ought to be pretty easy to present to us. And if there isn't, and it isn't presented to us, then there isn't much for us to do, regardless of our experience. It's, I could, you know, if we had time, I could probably spend 20 minutes talking about, you know, boring everybody with all my Freedom of Information Act and open government stories. But that's not, that's not the direction that we want to hit. I think we want to be very careful as to how we proceed and not pick up everything and run with it, because once we do that, then everybody else is going to say, "Well, you know, that other guy came down here, and you know, he really didn't satisfy the judicial, excuse me, the jurisdictional requirement, but they let him go on and on and on, we spent hours and hours before we find out that we really shouldn't have entertained the thing in the first place." So if this is something that goes back to September of last year, I don't see any great need for haste. I want to see that charter, first of all, and if I see the charter, then there may be some other things that I'll want to see. And as this, quote, "evidence" is brought before the commission, then it might be time to refer this to Jeff's commission, excuse me, Jeff's committee. But before that, you know, we have a really good chance of winding up chasing our tail around here for months and not accomplishing much of anything, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I think we're trying to, I mean, based on that, kind of trying to define what the responsibilities of the subcommittee are versus the council, right? So we could say it's Jeff's committee's job, essentially. The complaints go to the committee, they can determine if there's more information that they need for, in this case, Dr. McNinch, to submit. You know, if you don't get it, then they can recommend, or they can say that this is not a valid complaint as far as, you know, the council. I mean, or is that something that we want to do at this level, when every complaint comes in, that it's reviewed, and then, as a council, it's discussed, and then if there's information that we need, we request it, and then at the point that we feel we're satisfied that we have jurisdiction over this, it gets referred to the committee? So it's really just trying to decide, you know, the procedure in that regard, how do we want to handle that? Personally, I'd like to give all the work to Jeff, but I mean, you know, it's up to the council.
I agree. I think that we need to have, we need to have a discussion of the evidence that is presented, and whether or not the evidence allows us to go forward. And I agree with Bob that the charter would be an important place to start, because I don't think we can, as you said, you know, entertain every single thing, because there might be some instances where, okay, the evidence says that this is the procedure, and we don't have any jurisdiction over this. And even if we do have jurisdiction, once again, we're an advisory board. All we can do is issue an opinion, whether or not the agency wants to agree with that, comply with that decision, as long as they're complying with the open government law, that's the important thing.
Senator Klitschke brings up a good point, and if you recall, Bob, in the case of the legislature with the Ethics Committee, before, it was that the case where anyone can just file an ethics complaint, put their name, identify what the complaint is, and then sign it, and the speaker is required to refer that complaint to the Ethics Committee. The Ethics Committee in the past was required to forward that to the Ethics Council to determine if there's jurisdiction or standing, or if the legislature should even be involved in something like that. And then the respondent has to appear before the full panel, and whether the respondent is innocent or guilty of that allegation, they've already been publicly tried. And so, and in most cases, these complaints do not get resolved until after the election, where chances are, you know, the damage is done, particularly in the case of an individual who may have been found innocent by the Ethics Committee. So what we did in the previous legislature, through Senator Guthard's chairmanship, is we revised the ethics process, where the chairperson decides from the moment the complaint is filed, whether or not it's warranted to go forward, to proceed, to go to the Ethics Council, or... So I think, you know, you make a similar comparison to these complaints that this FOIA council will be receiving, but my question remains, who determines jurisdiction? I'm in favor of, yeah, a process where the, yeah, the committee, so all complaints, we have another complaint from Ruha Sabeti, and the most we can meet is in the span of every five days pursuant to the open government law. What happens when there's lag time, when we're not meeting regularly to say, "I think this has jurisdiction," or "I think this is something that's warranted of the council to look into"? Does it go here, and then it goes to Jeff, or does Jeff just automatically get all the complaints, as Randri is suggesting? And his committee, and you imagine you'll develop your own rules, which we would adopt formally through the council, maybe by a majority vote of your committee members will decide whether or not it's warranted of going forward, so that no one here is making any unilateral decisions, including myself.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Yeah, I just think that the committee or subcommittee, I'm not even sure what to call it now, Committee on Public Complaints? I'm not really sure. But it needs to set criteria to recommend to the full body, and there has to be a screening process to accept any complaint. Right now, there is no format. It's obvious, in the complaints that we got from Mr. Sabeti and Dr. McNinch, that they just followed whatever criteria they had in mind. They just wanted to present information. They had banged their head against the wall, trying to get information out of various government agencies, and they weren't able to, at least not to their satisfaction. And so they submitted because they were frustrated enough to put all the documentation together. So I think we owe it to them to at least entertain what it is they're asking for. And then it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we have that spreadsheet, we have that checklist. Just like any federal government, or even GovGuam, all agencies are expert at screening people and screening complaints. You see it all the time. If you don't meet the requirements of the checklist, then you're not entertained, and it protects everybody. Everything's in writing, and I think we should do the same thing, at first at the committee or subcommittee level, and then through the full body. Thank you.
Let me recognize, Dr.
Well, I don't think we're at that point, Mr. Chairman. We're, in effect, discussing council procedures, et cetera. I don't think Mr. Dr. McNinch has an oar in that boat. If I were to agree with Jeff, then I would say Jeff's committee should meet, it should develop these guidelines, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and then we could perhaps entertain Dr. McNinch's complaint.
We adopt the guidelines, yeah.
I don't, you know, I don't agree with the basic point, but if we're to go that direction, then we should do it that way. Otherwise, we're going to wind up, we're going to wind up spending a lot of time and not accomplishing...
Yeah, just like the Ethics Committee, there's a checklist of those filing a complaint, and they have to meet those criteria in order for it to be... So it's, it's a very objective process, and it's not subjective, right?
But I will come back to my basic point, and that is, if the Faculty Senate is not chartered by the Board of Regents, there isn't anything else to do, and I think that's a pretty simple thing to present. Either it's presented, or it's not presented.
But I think coming up with the procedures and the policies, whether it's all in the committee, or partially at the council, or whatever the recommendation, I think that's important. And I think my expectation for this first meeting was procedural, I mean, coming up with the rules and the policies, and how we were going to move forward, so.
Same here, and that's why we used Dr. McNinch's situation as a discussion point.
We've chosen the subcommittee chairs, and so the subcommittee chairs need to pick people on the council, or ask people on the council to be on the subcommittee, so that they can have, develop these procedures, and then take the draft to the committee to adopt, and then we can tell Mr. McNinch and Mr. Sabeti, here's, here are the procedures, here's what you need to have if you're going to file this.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, is someone presenting evidence to the council, or...
Is this a court? Or is it a council?
Well, I'm just kind of...
Well, it's, it's a council that's supposed to promote transparency, so anybody can talk to...
Anybody at any time.
Well, unless he's being disruptive. Did you feel he was being disruptive?
Well, I just wondered what was going on, that's all.
Okay, yeah, okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair, since he brought it to my attention, it was just that, he was just pointing out the fact that the, on his submitted documents, that on 2D, that the University of Guam Faculty Senate had its charter approved by UOG Board of Regents. So he was just pointing out the fact that it is chartered by the Board of Regents, the UOG Senate.
If I may, I think maybe what Senator Klitschke is getting at, and I agree with him, and I agree with Jeff, I'm a really amiable kind of guy, some people question that, but the, I think what it is, is that, like, let's use Dr. McNinch's complaint. I think we need to set up the process of how that's going to be handled. If we're saying that it's going to go to the committee, subcommittee on advisory opinions, guidelines, whatever, to the complaint, then you, as the chair, would receive it, would pass it down to Jeff, Jeff's group would sit and meet, there would be some criteria set up as to at least a basic format, because we don't want people to come in and present their complaint, and then be told to go back and go, "Oh, by the way, we need this information too. Oh, by the way, we need this information too." That would get really old really quick, and people are going to say, "Ah, you know what? This is just another bleh." So we need to have that basic listing of, okay, what is the complaint, what is the question, what is it that you're looking for? And just like here with Dr. McNinch's request, the charter. If it's chartered by the Regents, as I said, the answer to question A is going to be yes, to me, because it's chartered by the, and it's recognized. The problem with this, if I may not to get off the task, but the problem, as I read through this, is it's the age-old, the Board of Regents doesn't want to touch it because it's a quote-unquote "faculty issue," and being in that realm for a long time, I understand that very well. They want to push it off on the faculty to do it, yet they chartered them, we're going to assume. Then it's their problem, too. They chartered this organization. They said, "Go forth and do what you do, then take responsibility for it. Don't push it off on the faculty again," because right away, he didn't get the answer. That's where I see this problem. So I think you're right, Jeff, I think you need to get, whoever your group's going to be, I'll help you. And put together that basic idea of, what is it that we need to get in order to do what we need to do, or what we're mandated to do, and to make those recommendations? And always remind people in the education process that we are only a recommending body. We don't have jurisdiction to enforce. We can only, this is what we can do. Of course, that recommendation could hold a lot of weight, when they go, you know, hire all these attorneys that, you know, have already admitted that they got to get the fees, so. But aside from that, so, you know, that's my input to that, and I think, yeah, that would be a good place to start, not to delay Dr. McNinch any further than, since already six months have gone by, but we need to really do that, because otherwise, we're going to be inundated with a lot of stuff.
I agree. I think we need to, as Randri said, this first meeting should be a procedural meeting, and to ask for redress of a complaint on our first meeting day is a little unrealistic. So we really need to come up with some procedures first.
Okay. Dr. Ron, any final closing comments? And you just got to speak into the record, everything is being recorded.
Certainly, I appreciate the council's advice, and I would like to suggest that you do have a lot of procedural issues to work on, and I appreciate that. But I do believe also that you need to also make this council operate in a citizen-friendly way, rather than in a legalistic way, and I want to be very clear about that. If you create a mini court of law here, you've totally defeated the purpose of your council. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
In that vein, I'd move that all the complaints go directly to the committee, and the committee can then make a review of what's going on, and then bring a presentation to the council as a whole, and the council as a whole can determine what they want to do with it at that point. But it's premature to even start talking about the merits of it. And I agree with what Ron's saying. If what we're going to do is set up a bunch of rules, and make this thing so it's very difficult for the citizens to come here and get what they need, then we don't need to be here, and I don't need to be here, I waste my time. I charge $300 an hour, I'm giving this time to the community because I think this is an important thing that needs to be done. We're not going to, you're not going to waste my time, and I don't want to waste your time. And I think that I want as many people in the community as possible to come down here. If they've got a problem with FOIA, come on down, let's see if we can't take care of it. I know we don't have any enforcement, but to be able to advise is a big deal in this community, so we want to be able to do that. So let's take it in, and I don't want to hold him off because we're waiting to decide what our rules are going to be. Let's bring it in, take a look at it, and then set another meeting, and then they could generate some kind of input from the committee.
With the understanding that we generate those rules simultaneously.
Right, right.
Yeah, so...
So what's a motion, before a motion that we start sending it to the subcommittee?
On the floor, that all complaints received by the FOIA council be referred to Jeff.
But by the same token, I think it's a good idea that the entire council is advised of the complaint...
Yeah, of course, well, Bernard's been sort of...
At the same time that the council gets it, yeah. At the same time that the council gets it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And she's been, she's been doing that with the first two complaints that we've received. Yeah. Okay, on the motion...
I'd like you to read the motion back.
The motion is that...
Do you want me to read it back, or do you want me to restate it?
Here, I'll read it back. The motion is that any complaints formally received by the FOIA council will be referred to the committee on this responsibility to, to issue advisory opinions or guidelines based on public complaints. That's the motion. So that the two complaints that we received, as a matter of procedure, they just get forwarded to Jeff's committee, and every member gets a courtesy copy on an email.
As I mentioned earlier, the way these two complaints are handled is critical to how this council is going to function in the future. And I can't disagree with what Gary says about, you know, creating something that's so complicated that it drives everybody off. But the time to work on that, the time to make it citizen-friendly is now, not after we start digging into complaints. So I agree with Jane, and I think Rindrotti also, that the first step is for the committee to develop its procedure as to what it's going to do when it gets a complaint. Otherwise, we're running the risk of making it up as we go along, and we're running the risk of creating something that will be out of control before it even starts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we're saying, both sides are saying the same thing, because...
Excuse me.
Yes.
You're speaking ex cathedra on a motion, and I think others want to be recognized.
Do they? Rindrotti?
I understand what you're saying, Gus, but at the same time, to give the committee credibility, I think we have to have those rules, so that people understand that they're all, you know, all their complaints are being treated the same and being treated fairly. I think kind of doing something halfway right now, and then kind of doing, you know, and then changing it later on, I don't think that serves, you know, the greater purpose in that regard. I, you know, I mean, we don't need to wait three months for rules and procedures. It can be as simple as you need them to be, but I think the committee should put forward those. We should adopt it as a council, and then we can refer, you know, complaints, and we can start at that point.
Otherwise, we're just ad hoc issuing opinions every meeting, and I just don't think that brings us, I don't want to function that way either. I think that doesn't bring credibility to us.
This is a very important discussion, and it would determine our future actions. And so I certainly appreciate the dialogue. Jeff?
You have my personal assurance that I'll move very swiftly. And the first thing that I'll do after this meeting today is I'll send everybody an email inviting them, asking them if they want to be a part of the committee, and please just give it some thought. And if you think you're appropriate for it, let's do it, and we'll start talking about it right away.
Yeah. And there are rules in place that can be a template, as a starting point.
Right, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, right.
You have a motion on the floor, Attorney General Montalto.
I second that.
Okay. So, yeah. And so again, to repeat, the motion is to refer the complaints received by the FOIA council to Jeff's committee, with the understanding that he's also going to develop some rules of procedure. And there were some objections to the motion, saying we shouldn't even refer the rules to the committee unless we have those rules in the first place. Okay, so that was my recap of the discussion. All those in favor of Gary's motion?
Aye.
You need seven...
Automatic...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I need seven votes, it's going to carry. One, two, three, four, five, six, right?
Seven.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, motion carries. But this puts the impetus on your committee, Jeff, to develop those, anyway, as a safeguard. These rules are not going to go forward unless this council adopts your rules and rec... So my point, Bob, if you allow me, is to say that we're saying the same thing.
It could work out the same way.
Thank you.
It could. Doesn't necessarily have to, but it could.
It will.
If it does, then I'll be very happy.
It will.
I'm just glad everybody's so outspoken.
Any other business?
Another meeting in total.
Public comment? Any public com... Oh, Mr. Mason, you may join us, yeah. Any public comment? If none, set future meetings. Item eight. Is, I understand Wednesdays may not...
Wednesday mornings is normally not good.
Yeah.
But any other morning, except Tuesday? Wednesday is not good for me. But if it's good for the rest of the...
We can handle this by email, maybe, right? To determine what works best. It doesn't have to be in the morning, it can be in the evenings. We want to work around your time, because your time is all voluntary and certainly valuable.
So now, when Jeff calls his committee meetings, do we have to publish that in the timelines as well as everything else?
You want to turn on the mic, yeah.
Those are working sessions, yeah. Those are working sessions, working sessions or not.
Oh, I think you do.
If you are going to make a recommendation back. Say, who?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Bob?
Well, the question was, does the...
Please speak in the mic, because people really want to listen to what you have to say. I do.
I'm not sitting between you two guys.
No. We're good.
I'm moved.
We're good. Bob, Senator Klitsky, please.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the kind words. I would, again, my horseback opinion would be that the open government law would apply to any committee or subcommittee designated by this committee if it is going to make a recommendation back to us. Otherwise, then we're a candidate for the, we become what we hate award, which is awarded to those who condemn, and others that which they condone in themselves.
But Bob, then the recommendation is voted on, so it's open anyway. I mean, we're just drafting the recommendation.
But he's right. It's like a straw...
Gary, you...
If you take a straw vote, it's not... He's right.
Well, then how do you actually operate?
You do your work session, you just, you don't do a recommendation, you just collate the information. That would be one way around it.
Yeah.
But he's right, I mean...
So we can do work recommendations?
Well, not, let's not say one way around it. You do work sessions, and when you're ready to recommend, you just, you know, which is due notice, that's a subcommittee's meeting, yeah.
Comes to the committee and makes a recommendation.
I think we have to realize that anything, this is a legislative committee, so there is going to be some procedural issues that those of us who are journalistic are not going to be so crazy about, but democracy is a very long and involved process.
Yes, it is.
And sometimes painful, but we get this. Okay. There's no other items on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved, and second, but we are adjourned, subject to the call of the chair, pursuant to the open government law. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.